Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the August 13th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting, again via Zoom. And it looks like we're going to probably do this until the rest of the year 2020, and then we'll revisit a meeting again in public, seeing where we are with the in terms of the virus. So with that, as usual, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for the meeting of July 22?
Lauren Raven, I motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for July 22, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the board minutes for the meeting of August 5th, which was a special meeting?
Hi, Lauren Raven, motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting held on August 5th, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you. Those two meetings, their minutes are approved. So we'll go right into the, we have a pretty lengthy agenda, so we'll go right into the updates. I'll start with the first selectments updates. I want to give a tip of the cap to all our first responders, fire, police, emergency, medical, our emergency operations director, Chief Orizoa, our fleet department, which kept all our vehicles running throughout the storm, the sewer department, and of course, the men who work at the tree division for all they did during the superstorm ECAS. It was a long time. We, I think, were just about back at full strength with everybody, but it took a while. But I want to thank everybody there, everybody on here who chipped in. I want to thank Angie and Barb at OFS for fielding all of the concerns and calls from our residents. Most were very understanding. There were a few that were pretty tough to take, so thank you for doing that and manning the front lines. With that, I'll segue into the storm itself. I believe on the 24th of August, there will be a public hearing in Hartford. I will testify at that with constructive criticism. I'm not just going to call up there and testify and complain. I wanted to give some constructive criticism and some ideas going forward, I think could be very helpful to the utility company. Also, I want to, I'm going to form a task force for the next two weeks, to report back in two weeks with actionable items, where we can, where we can look at the response we had here and see where we can improve, see what else we can implement. Our town did a phenomenal job, thanks to everybody I just mentioned. But it became clear that there was some gaps that have always been there. And so, for example, you know, my neighborhood here was down for a long time because it was just a tree leaning against a wire, and it was a 20-minute fix. So what we're going to do is, you know, maybe every year, I'm going to suggest in the spring, before hurricane season gets here, to just go around, take an inventory of all the trees that are near power lines that need to be trimmed, and do it on a regular schedule. It's never going to stop these storms. It's never going to stop blackouts from occurring and trees from falling, but it will mitigate it. It will definitely mitigate it. So that task force, I've asked Chief Orizoa to chair it. I've asked a few people, including Jimmy Clifford of Glenville, who worked for the utility company for many years and is very, very well-respected in the industry and throughout town, and a few others. But it's just going to be a short, two-week one to come back and give us actionable items that we can implement. And the reason why it's being done right away and just with a two-week window is because we're in hurricane season already, and there's apparently the potential for 25 unnamed storms to hit. I'm not saying they're going to all hit, but there's a potential for it. So we're going to be back at it. And, you know, we want to make sure that all the elderly, all the people that are vulnerable who live in complexes, that they have the information ahead of time, where the cooling stations are, where the sheltering venues are, and how they, and have a plan in place how they get there. Because once the storm hits, you know, we can do all the reverse 911 calls and e-blasts we want. If there's no power, they're not going to get that information. So we have to do all we can to mitigate the damage on our end, and we will, we will do that. The First Selectment Public Safety Committee, that's going to get started in September, that will be chaired by John Mistracchio, that will eventually take over the storm preparedness part of public safety. But we wanted to jumpstart it with a quick task force to see what we can do immediately. And then the task force, the Public Safety Committee will take over from there. We are going to be interviewing people and selecting candidates to be on the GHS Vestabule Committee in the coming days and weeks. The Reimagined Connecticut, Connecticut, Reimagined Greenwich Committee, meeting again next week, obviously didn't meet the last week and a half because of the storm. We're going to get together, make sure that, under Lauren's leadership there, that we have meetings posted, because we're all of us. Lauren, Jill, and I want to attend those meetings and without violating anything. So we want those posted and minutes and everything else for there. So that will be done in the coming days. The Waterfront Committee will be starting up in September with meetings in forums. Peter Tessie, a former First Selectman, has agreed to cheer that. And we will be meeting, and then maybe next week, with department heads to go over the guidelines and see what can and cannot be done before we go down any roads with plans and then find out maybe that it's not doable. So we'll be meeting, hopefully, next week with the department heads. Greenscape Committee is going forward, is meeting Margarita Albin and Katie DeLuca and that group, which we're very excited about. Also, I met last Saturday with the members of the Junior League, who have agreed to take on a project that we talked about in Pasco, the Mill Pond area, beautifying and enhancing that area, making it a nice little village green, and then some of the outskirts of that area, where, for example, if you're on the Post Road and you go by Starbucks going towards Riverside, the view of Mill Pond is blocked now with brush overgrowth. Things like clearing that out and just making, you know, looking and getting that vista back again will be on their agenda, and it'll be done in the next year. So they're, they're very excited about that. There's a few other committees, but some are a few weeks away. They're all working, and that's the thing. They're just not committees in name, they're going to be committees in action. So that's, that's a good thing for the town. And a reminder, tonight is a very scaled-down version of the St. Rock's Feast. It's going to be two nights, thanks to the Health Department for working with them to make sure that they go above and beyond the protocols during this pandemic for public safety purposes. It is the 100th anniversary, I believe, of the first Roman Catholic Church, I believe, in town, built by Italian immigrants from two towns in Italy. So they're very excited not to miss it. So if you're not doing anything tonight, and I think Saturday, please stop down there. And I believe Sunday may be the processions or the streets again, which is always a fun, a fun day. So with that, I will turn it over. I see Jill in front of me. We'll go to Selectwoman Oberlander for her updates.
Thank you, Fred. Since we last met, not too much to report, other than to echo your thanks to our town employees and first responders. Mostly, I was responding to resident concerns about the power outage and information transfer. Particularly, I want to thank Chief Hebe, who was extraordinarily responsive to my inquiries and resident inquiries as well, and I know that that made a big, big difference for our residents. So thank you to everyone. But also, just to remind our residents that they can reach out to me and to Lauren, as well as to Fred in the Office of the First Selectmen, and we will do our best to get you the information. I thought that the information flow from Eversource was definitely lacking, and I'm going to ask that in addition to your constructive comments in the review, that we do do a serious lessons learned, so that we can assist our utility companies in, in getting the right information to our residents, so that they can prepare to take whatever action they need. And I think that is going to be the most important thing going forward. That's it, thanks.
Thanks, Jill. Okay, Selectwoman Raven, Lauren, good morning.
Good morning, thank you. So since we last met, I had the pleasure of presenting a certificate to Hernando Chavez after he retired from the Department of Public Works after 35 years. It was a very heartwarming experience, have his family there, and know that he had dedicated so much of his adult life to the town of Greenwich. As Fred mentioned, we are getting applications for the GHS Security Vestabule Building Committee. We are still accepting applications. We'll start to get those interviews scheduled in the next couple of weeks. I just wanted to publicly let the public know that if you're interested, to please go ahead and go to the Town of Greenwich website, under the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee is the process to submit your nomination form. We also continue to get emails and concerns regarding the 5G antennas that are going up in town. So then, I'm going to connect with you again to see what our next steps are. I know we talked about scheduling a public forum, and like Jill and Fred, I thank our public safety, I thank our town employees. I personally had a downed telephone wire, not telephone wire, telephone pole and tree blocking my street for several days. And thank you to my neighbor, Chief Hebe, for helping voice our concerns as a neighborhood. But in having my neighborhood watch the whole process, we actually noticed the 5G antennas that went up on our street. We have a home that houses adults with special needs, so I share the concern about these antennas going up in town. I know there's two sides of the story. Many of us were out of not only power, but our cell service as well. So there's got to be that, you know, right balance between safety and, and service. So that's what I've worked on for the past couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, that's it for the updates, so we'll go on to old business. And we have the town administrator, Ben Brany, here with our nuisance ordinance for the second read and vote.
Good morning, all. The first reading of the nuisance ordinance amendment was presented at your meeting on July 9th, just to refresh everyone's memory. At that meeting, a concern was raised regarding the clarity of the definition of nuisance. So the administration reviewed the language and redrafted Section H, which is the definition of nuisance, to be reformatted from a narrative paragraph to a numbered list. And that proposed revised formatting is included in your amended agenda packet, I believe on pages 15 and 16 of the PDF. The reformatted language remains substantially similar to your originally proposed language at the July 9th meeting, with the following exception. We did add new language under the new proposed Section H2 Paragraph C, the words "or any public right of way" or "public park." That was added as we were testing the language, just to avoid any potential of gap enforcement. And lastly, I'd just like to note that all the new language is shown in capitalizations, but that is for presentation purposes only. It would be in a normal sentence case when it eventually passes. But assuming you, you vote in the affirmative today, we will, we'll still on track to submit this to the RTM for their September reading, which should be their first reading, and then hopefully October 26th will be the second reading. And lastly, I just want to thank Selectperson Oberlander and Town Attorney Marino for their review and comments in the redrafting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ben, and I echo that. Thank you to, to Ben and Jill in the redraft. Just to, to clarify for people, we have some properties in town that we just were falling outside of the current ordinance. For example, if somebody would just boarded up a, a structure and left it there, that would certainly skate under the radar and was within the, what was allowable in the past. But as we know, that would, you know, again, that just contributed to the blight in areas of our town. So I think this is very compassionate. There's a six, you know, if something is, a property is in that type of state condition for six months, so that's, it's quite a long time. So it's certainly compassionate and, but again, gets to the point, we don't want these things going on forever, and we've seen these, some of these properties laying fallow for, for not just weeks and months and years, but in some cases, decades. And everybody is held hostage, not, not only the people in that neighborhood held hostage, but if they apply for a tax abatement, the neighbors, and it's granted, it starts to affect everybody in town. So this is very, very important to get this to the RTM and to get it passed. So I appreciate all that, that help with this, that helped with it, and look forward to any questions before the vote.
Yes, thanks, Fred. This is Jill. I just have one additional drafting comment. By the time I saw the revision, it was already published. On two, I think actually would be clearer to have 2D be similar to 3A and B. So it would be 2A and B and C and D, and you would have a Roman Net 1 before hazardous or Roman Net 2 before wood and get rid of E. That's really, Ben, did you follow that? So it's just a, so the idea is that you have a four-prong, but that fourth prong is a 1 or 2, similar to 3. So that's just a drafting issue to clarify the way 2 reads. That's, that's my own comment.
Selectperson Oberlander, just so I can get clarification in the event that Ben has questions. So you would strike 2D and E and replace it with a format similar to the 3D?
No, I would strike, I would leave D and I would add a Roman Net 1 before hazardous.
Okay.
And strike E, add a Roman Net 2 before wood.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So that way, there are four triggers, but that fourth item is one or the other.
I will send a revision, I'll do that revision now and circulate it to Ben now, and we'll probably, if you have access to your email while we're, we could probably have this done well in advance of the conclusion of this meeting.
Yeah, and I, this is just, it doesn't change the substance at all, it just makes it clearer for the reader. And so I am prepared to vote on, on that. If anyone has an objection with that comment, but it really just, it just clarifies the chain and the reader, so.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't change the meaning, so.
No. And just to raise some of the, the issues that we had talked about earlier, that there is still the ability for the town to be, to be, if they review a nuisance ordinance, understand that there are case-specific accounts that may require more or less time, and will work with residents to resolve the issue. It's not intended to be punitive at first impression, it's just intended to address longstanding problems after a failure to find resolution.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And then just so you know, since we started this focus, three properties on, a family that owns three of the properties on Southwater Street have already started to clean up those properties. The property on, I believe it's William Street, right next to, off between Need and Southwater, that was connected, was the house that was connected, one side's fallen apart, the other side has a, a different family living in it, that was just sold, and that will be taken care of too. So that's going to come off of the list. So it looks like just by discussing these things and putting a focus on it and having articles in the paper, in some cases, people had just forgotten about them, but they've stepped up, and hats off to those families that have done that and will continue to do that. So this has already started to pay dividends, so I appreciate the, the focus on it.
I have a couple of comments. So Ben, I think you recall during our first read, I talked about, yes, here's the ordinance, but more about the process. So I think I would still like to see exactly what the process is. I've heard from residents that they're maybe not clear on how to report when they see something that we should address, and also what the status might be. So how do they know that it's falling into our process of reviewing the individual case of, of an instance? There was some recommendations about, you know, any kind of application we could use. Somebody mentioned, you know, seat click fix, you know, I'm not sure, you know, what we use as a town to collect this type of feedback from our residents, because we know that we don't have a plethora of nuisance or abatement officers, you know, at our disposal. So another recommendation was also, in the context of some of the committees that Fred is talking about, do we want to think about creating a committee of non-town employees to just help with the process? So just something to think about as you, as you move forward. But again, it doesn't change my support of the ordinance, it's more how we will put it into practice.
Just very briefly, we do have our, our own version of the seat click fix. We have branded it Access Greenwich, and there is an option on the website where anyone can file this type of complaint today. But you're absolutely correct, part of the process is to make sure there's, as much as we worked on clarity of definition of nuisance, we need to make sure there's clarity of input on how to put in the, the concern into us. So we'll make sure.
And then just see the status. I think that's some of the feedback that I heard, they, people know how to do it, but I don't know if, if we're very clear on checking, like, is it now in, in the, in the town's queue, so to speak, to go out and, you know, take a look, so that multiple people don't report the same instance?
Understood, the feedback loop's important, and we'll make sure we, we work on that.
Awesome, thank you.
Great, and we are, just also add, we will, we're going to involve all departments that have jurisdiction, not just one or two. And so we're going to be meeting regularly, if this is passed, to go over these properties and following up once a month or so, so nothing falls by the wayside and nothing's forgotten about or off the radar. So, thank you. So do we have to wait for that, that amendment or that just rewording, or can we go ahead and vote right now?
Mr. First Selectman, in my opinion, that's up to you all. I'm about to email it out in a second, but I think it's just formatting, I don't think it's, should affect your ability to vote.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Let's just go ahead and vote, because I think we've all seen that it's not changing anything, it's just making it a little clearer. So with that, is there a motion for an approval of this amendment to the nuisance ordinance? Section, Town Code, Section 6C?
Lauren Raven, I motion to amend Town Code, Section C, the nuisances ordinance.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you. I think there'll be a lot of happy people in town when this gets to the RTM, so thanks again to everybody. Okay, next, the last item on old business is a request for MI status referral regarding the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, and we have our Superintendent of Buildings and Maintenance, Alan Minelli. Morning, Alan.
Morning, everyone. This is the second read of our request to have the Board of Selectmen move a municipal status forward on the replacement of the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. We're contemplating a project to demolish the existing building and situate a new 35,000 square foot building in its place, with all the entities that the committee, the first, First Selectmen's Committee for the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center had requested. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. I did receive some questions from the Selectmen after the last meeting, and some members of the public that were monitoring the webinar, the last meeting, and I've, most of those were positive about the building. In fact, all of them were positive about the building, and I think I've answered those sufficiently.
Thank you, thank you, Alan. Any questions or comments for Alan? Jill?
Thank you, Alan. And just to reiterate a comment that I had made, or a question that I had asked at the last time, and there has been subsequent communication from a number of residents about it, was on the environmental improvements to the building and the goal of having essentially a net-zero building and, and other means. I know this is just approving the MI, I'm 100% supportive of this project. I think I was quoted, Ken, as saying it's about time. Thank you for all your hard work, and also for the committee members who are on this call, listening, thank, thank them as well. But I would like to continue to see efforts made to enhance the environmental footprint of the building. There was a question raised about the curved roof, roof line, and whether there are other options. I don't know whether you want to address that now, or whether that'll be brought up as part of the process, but I do think it should be part of the record.
Okay, so when you're speaking of the curved roof, Jill, are you talking about the curved roof in relationship to the PV panels that would be placed there?
Yes, so there was a question raised after our last meeting about whether, you know, how that, the aesthetic of the curved roof and how that will work with any future solar panels.
So the curved roof will support solar panels. We are going to structurally reinforce the roof to support those panels and put all the electrical, electric infrastructure in for those panels. I said at the last meeting that we'd be, the town needs to a private power authority to provide panels. Having the, one of the comments I did receive, in fact, I got it from a member of the public and you forwarded to me, was that the aesthetics of those panels on the curved roof, unfortunately, when we're talking about PV panels, and it's essential into the building getting to net zero, is to provide those panels. Having panels that are built into the roof are really hard to maintain if there's a roof leak. So the panels are traditionally separated. I know there's companies out there that are making residential panels that are built in, and they haven't really been proved out yet, and we're spending money on a potential $17 million building, we don't want to have roof leaks. So what we're planning right now is a more tried-and-true engineering resolution and having those panels placed on the roof. We could look at placing them further back on the roof to mitigate some of the aesthetic issues, but we're working for that, because we're trying to balance that load of reducing the amount of electricity the building takes, replacing that with renewable energy.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Alan? Okay, thank you, Alan.
Welcome.
With that, is there a motion for referral of MI status for the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center?
Lauren Raven motions to approve municipal improvement status for Eastern Greenwich Civic Center.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander. Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Uh, Lauren Raven votes yes. And thank you, Alan, and the committee as well.
Thank you all. You're welcome.
Thank, thank you. That's, uh, another milestone here. This is a, a long time coming. Something that, uh, has been talked about for, again, decades and several, um, committees, uh, and have looked at it. So, uh, thank you to all those committees and of course, the last one and, uh, Alan and everybody else who worked on it. So thank you. With that, we will go to, uh, new business and the appointment of a deputy police chief.
Right. It looks like we had a hand raised, but maybe he, maybe he took his hand down.
I'm sorry.
But he took his hand down.
Okay. I'm sorry about that, but thank you for catching that. Um, with that, we go to new business and the appointment of a deputy police chief, uh, Chief James Heady. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioner. Uh, at this time, I'd like to propose to the Board of Selectmen for consideration for promotion to Deputy Chief, Captain Robert Berry. As previously discussed, uh, there was a competitive, uh, exam that was administered by Badge Quest, which is the contractor for the town of Greenwich for promotional purposes. And, um, again, uh, difficult in the fact there were, uh, two highly qualified candidates. However, uh, I would like at this time to, to recommend, um, Captain Robert Berry.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, as someone who, uh, sat in and, and, uh, interviewed both, uh, the applicants, I gotta say that, uh, you've done a great job, uh, building a solid team up and down, uh, with each interview and, and each applicant within the department, it's, it gets more and more impressive. And these were two, uh, highly qualified candidates and, uh, it was a tough call. But, uh, certainly, uh, Captain Berry is, is deserving of this and, uh, uh, we look forward to, to working with him, uh, in the future. But, uh, turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or, or comments. Jill?
Uh, thank you, Fred, and thank you, Chief. I just think we have a number of, of the public on the, on this call and also watching. If you could talk a little bit about, um, your, um, motivation for creating this deputy chief, this additional deputy chief position? And, um, what the role would be and how that's going to work in the current chain of command?
Uh, well, um, the, the Police Department has in the past had two deputy chiefs. In, in this particular configuration, um, one of the deputy chiefs will have considerable oversight in, professional standards so that they will have, um, more opportu- more oversight in those things that are most important regarding the newest, uh, laws of police accountability, for one. And again, it will allow us to do some strategic planning. And, uh, when we look at succession planning, I, I think it is a, um, a positive thing that many, many of our, um, officers have developed into high-level command positions. So, I honestly think that this will give us a, a greater, uh, oversight, especially with the professional standards and accountability. So, we are still working out the exact details as to how the two deputies will divide the work. But I think that it, uh, it'll be shown that it's a positive, um, to have that, uh, greater oversight over all of the divisions. We basically have patrol, detectives, um, operations and, um, professional standards. Professional standards is that agent, is that part of the agency that, uh, produced our accreditation, which took over two years. And, um, having at least one of the deputies, uh, be an accredited accreditation manager to oversight, oversee that part of the, the department will be a very positive thing.
Thank you. Um, and I, I do appreciate that. And I, uh, commend you for taking action to, uh, keep our Police Department current with the times and address the present day challenges. For I, as you know, I have a couple of comments. I didn't know if Lauren had questions first that she wanted to ask before I make a couple of comments.
No, no questions. Um, yeah, just probably comments as well.
So, um, there, there were two things that, that struck me with regard to this agenda item. Um, the, the first is something that we have discussed and it's, it is of course, no bearing, uh, on the candidate for, the position in terms of qualification. I understand that from speaking and being briefed that there, the candidates were excellent and I appreciate their longevity and service to the department and the town. It seems to me, uh, that, and I would hope that as we move forward with all of our hires, that particularly at this moment in time and going forward, that all hires could be representative of the community at large. This was a new position, not filling a vacancy. And I would really encourage uh, the First Selectman in his role in, in hiring and all of our department heads and their role in hiring to take a, um, a careful look at, at, uh, at the, the breadth of opportunity for, um, making all of our positions representative of our community at large. I think we all benefit from that. And again, that's, that's a general comment about hiring and not specific necessarily to this position. But of course, it was, it was something that, and, um, given the, the times that we live in, something that I think is, is well worth considering. The second comment I had is, um, related to the process, which, um, the charter gives the Board of Selectmen the, of the authority to vote on this position. And I have appreciated being briefed on the interview process. Uh, so thank you to Fred and to, uh, the members that provided information. Um, however, I wasn't involved in any of the interviews or in any of the selection. And so i- in the end, my conclusion is that to vote on this appointment without actually participating in the selection process ends up being a rubber stamp. And I don't believe this position should be a rubber stamp. I'm going abstain from the vote. Again, not a reflection on the quality or the candidate or the deputy chief, but, um, I think in order to really uh, effectuate the charter in, to vote on a, uh, an appointment, one needs to be a participant in the selection process. And so I will abstain on that vote. And, um, thank you for the briefing. And I hope as we move forward, that we'll be entitled to participate in the selection process as well.
Thank, thank you, Jill. Um, right now, I mean, I certainly, and I thank you for always, uh, calling ahead of time and, and of, of just letting me know. Um, that's what the process is now. It's something that, uh, neither you or Lauren or my, myself, uh, you know, made up. It's the process that we, uh, uh, we came into. And, um, so we just, we work as best as we can with it. And that's why I will always continue to give you updates, um, on where we are and certainly, um, uh, respect your, your opinion and your, uh, and again, we'll be back in two weeks to vote on a new fire chief. And I, you know, if that helps again, that's certainly, um, understandable. And, uh, I don't think anybody's holding, taking that personal. So, thank you. Lauren?
Thanks. And, um, I agree with Jill and we did talk about it. And thank you, everyone that was involved in briefing, uh, Jill and I in the final, um, selection, that we do need to look, you know, to the degree possible when we're hiring to be representative of our community. And there might be a way to, um, accommodate, you know, I, I think about the emergency operation, um, calls that we were on, we're listening. So if there's an opportunity, maybe when the candidates are at that final stage, to not necessarily ask questions and be part of the interview process, but any final presentations that the candidates make, it, it may be a way to sort of bridge that gap of being briefed after the fact and, and participating. So that might just be an idea.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no other comments or questions, uh, we will take it to a vote. Is there a motion to approve the chief's recommendation of Captain Robert Berry to the position of Deputy Police Chief?
Uh, Lauren Raven motions to approve the Chief Heavey's recommendation of Robert Berry to Deputy Police Chief.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I, Fred Camillo will second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander abstains from this vote.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay. Thank you all. And thank you, Chief. And congratulations Deputy Chief, uh, Robert Berry. Alrighty. Going on to the next, uh, item on the agenda of new business, we have deputy, the other deputy police chief, Mark Marino, uh, who runs our, uh, parking services here with, uh, an amendment for, to add a few, uh, I think four fifteen-minute parking spots on and around Greenwich Avenue. Good morning, Chief.
Actually, good morning, Fred. It's Barbara interrupting. Luanne Melantoni, the Business Services Manager, will be presenting instead of the deputy.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Morning, Luanne. How are you?
Good morning, all. DC Marino, but this is the best you can get from me right now. Um, okay, let me just. Okay. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Camillo, Ms. Oberlander, and Ms. Raven and other participants. Um, I'm here representing Parking Services and our request to add two fifteen-minute parking spaces to Greenwich Avenue. And also to incorporate into the charter the four existing fifteen-minute parking spaces on Mason Street. The two proposed fifteen-minute metered parking spaces are located on the west side of the avenue in the vicinity of twenty-six Greenwich Avenue. These spaces would enable customers from the East Putnam Variety Store and other merchants in intermediate vicinity to expedite business transactions with their customers. At this point, no objections were raised to date and the suggestion was favorably received by the owner of the Variety Store. If approved, this plan that I've mentioned can go into effect rather quickly. We simply reprogram the meters, update the meter plates housed in the meter domes, and construct, right now we have a temporary sign ready, um, which would state fifteen-minute parking only. And a permanent side would be ordered from lines and signs and it would be fixed in a matter of weeks. Um, our second request is to incorporate into the charter the four existing fifteen-minute parking spaces on Mason Street. The four fifteen-minute spaces are in the vicinity of two seventy-two Mason Street. Currently, these four spaces enable customers from the Bruce Park Liquor Store, Classic Auto Body, Sung Young Laundry, and the Honda dealership to transact business in an expedited fashion. Both of these proposed amendments were officially set aside a specific number of spots in designated areas and would serve, um, both merchants and their customers equally well. We thank you for your consideration of both amendments. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Raven?
Um, so Luanne, how, um, are the fifteen-minute parking enforced? And how challenging is it? So the more fifteen-minute spots we have, how does that impact the ability to enforce that indeed someone's not there for longer than fifteen minutes?
Uh, well, we regularly have, um, PEOs, which is Parking Enforcement Officers, assigned to various areas. And they know which are the fifteen-minute spots. So on their route, I mean, it's not going to be clocked on their watches, but they'll get a feel for, you know, it's not going to be fifteen minutes exactly, but if something is longer than, you know, that sixth time, the, you know, the, uh, person parking will be, will be cited, will be issued a citation. But I think due to the nature of these businesses, um, they're basically, um, pick up and go kind of things. We really don't, uh, envision, you know, longer-term parking than just, you know, train, you know, complete the transaction at the said locations.
Thank you. And are the meters coded that, that time would only go to fifteen minutes?
Yes. Yes. When you put your quarter in, yes. And it's also stated very clearly on the meter plate, which is housed in a dome, as well as a very, uh, deliberate sign that says fifteen-minute parking only. So, I mean, we're, we're doing our best to convey to the public fifteen-minute parking in the designated areas. And we've had no issue, um, with the current ones that are, uh, on Mason Street.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and yes, we, I personally heard from two, uh, merchants that were in favor of this. One at the bottom and one at the top of the avenue. So, uh, it does seem to be a, a popular, uh, thing for us to do right now. Uh, so any other questions or, uh, concerns?
I have no questions on this item, but I, I do ask Ms. Melantoni if she could stay on for the other. Um, there's some other parking-related questions coming up later on the agenda. I don't know whether you were prepared to stay on for those.
That was the plan. Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Luanne. Alrighty. Uh, with that, is there a motion to, um, amend the traffic ordinance to add two fifteen-minute metered parking spaces on Greenwich Avenue? And to include four existing fifteen-minute metered parking spaces on Mason Street?
Um, Lauren Raven, I motion to amend tra- our traffic ordinance to add two fifteen-minute metered parking spaces on Greenwich Avenue and to include the four existing fifteen-minute metered parking spaces on Mason Street.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that amendment, the, that motion, excuse me.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Uh, Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay. Thank you. Going on to the next item of new business, we have the Byram Park System Ten Year Update with our friend Peter Alexander. Good morning, Peter. Let's see if we can unmute Peter.
Peter, would you please unmute?
He's not responding. We've requested.
Okay, let me get back and Peter, please. Peter, please identify yourself.
How's that?
That's much better. Thank you.
Are we back? All right. Great. Yes. Peter Alexander, landscape architect. Lifelong proud resident of this incredible town. And thank you, guys. I, uh, wanted to understand how the special committees appointed by the First Selectmen work to a gr- degree. But what I'd like to accomplish is have you, uh, keep voting yes. It's been a, uh, the myriad of topics you have today. And I promise I'll be as fast as I can. So I wanted to start with the, um, special committees appointed by First Selectmen. And then, um, maybe help you understand why I think that the essence of what I'm requesting is that we, we have, uh, obviously different things going on in town that require some action. And the timing for this, um, uh, if you could see the, uh, do you see the screen with the green algae bloom and on the Byram River at present? Is that visible to you?
Not, not right now. Not on our screen here.
I'm sorry to hear that. Um, did you see the PowerPoint that I sent you?
Peter, we did not receive any backup information from you.
You didn't receive the PowerPoint that I sent out last night?
I think part of the problem is that you're sending it to our Gmail accounts and not our, uh, Town and Greenwich accounts. I know I got an email with a link to a article, but not necessarily a PowerPoint in my Gmail.
Yeah, the, uh, the same one I sent you had the, uh, quick PowerPoint that, uh, I was.
It might have gone into spam or something. I'll take a look.
Yeah, let me, uh, try. I, uh,
I re- I received your PowerPoint. I can forward it to Barbara. Maybe Barbara, you can, uh, are you still, if you're still.
Yeah, I see. Yeah. If you can forward to me, I can share it.
Oh, Craig, okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Craig. Thanks, Jill. Peter, while we're doing that, um, you are requesting, uh, that we consider forming a committee uh, about the Byram River and the watershed area, correct?
Yes. And the reason I think that it's kind of important right now is that the federal government has, uh, the federal government has funded some pretty significant projects, including the improvement to the bridges at the interface of Portchester and Greenwich at Route One. And I, I think that if we are able to get some interest in restoring the, especially the salt marshes in the Byram River area, this would be the prime time to do it. Did you all get my PowerPoint yet, or you still working on that?
I'm downloading now.
Yeah, let me, I guess it's. That's not my favorite music, sorry about that.
Peter, if you're signed on with two separate devices, sometimes there is some feedback. I don't, I can't tell from our screen whether you have two devices signed on.
Actually, there are two devices and I disabled.
Only two? I thought I had four. Sorry about this. How about now, am I back?
Yes, you're still on.
Let me. Is that showing the screen now?
Okay, we've got just one of you on the screen now, and Craig is working on the PowerPoint that Jill forwarded. Otherwise.
Yeah, I guess what I wanted to say, and I can follow up obviously, is that the area called Caroline Pond was taken over by the town for a lack of payment of taxes, right, around 1970. And there are various issues with the area now. It has a reputation for being extremely contaminated from the felt mill that was upstream. The difference now and the research that we've done over the last 10 years indicates that at one time, it was 50 feet, in some cases, at least legend, we haven't proved it yet, was 75 feet deep, which was excavated for sand and gravel for the Merritt Parkway. The felt mill closing occurred before the new modern toxic chemicals were in place. And now some of that is covered by many, many feet of silt and buildup that has accumulated over the years, both naturally and from the pipe system that keeps our roads safe. And the ability to use the yield to deepen the channel of the river, as well as use that yield to restore the salt marshes, which had naturally occurred over time, including the original name for Pemberwick, which was a Dutch name because they would come and trade with the Indians here, or scurvy fighting cranberries. And the concept of turning Caroline Pond into a very clean and very usable by humans and all creatures, great and small, would include the honoring of our Native American heritage with the Muncie speaking tribes that were here. And I think that if I can convince the select persons that it's something that I'm motivated by, not by enriching myself, but by honoring the incredible town I was allowed to grow up in, I would appreciate it because the overlapping problems of jurisdiction is that the Byram River is really the only river that shares literally a border as it enters into Long Island Sound. So the fact that New York has counties, we don't, that we have nine different jurisdictions for some of the improvements, has been somewhat gotten through by my friends at the Army Corps. I've worked with them since 1976 when I cleaned up oil spill in the St. Lawrence River, and they're pretty excited that we would be able to consider rebuilding marshes, not just on the Long Island Sound coast, but also in the intertidal ways. The solutions are considered even 15 or 20 years ago impossible, but now, thanks in large measure to the really strong efforts both at Yukon and Stony Brook, the improvements and the possibilities for making Long Island Sound very viable and clean again is, is really a pretty exciting potential for me. 10 years ago, when we started this project, I was not aware of a number of the improvements that were in the offing. Well, they're here now, and I think this is a really good time to act. I would love to hear your input, and I know you have a long, long schedule today, so I, I wanted to keep this to the, to the point. If you look at the last slide, can you scroll down to the last slide? Thank you. The part of what I've learned over the years from 1980, when I worked on the Scottish Islands, that if you have a good place to trap the silt and the runoff, and then occasionally clean it out, and you know when to clean it out because the silt trap fills up, but you also allow all the creatures that swim to go by, it's a, it's a great process to stabilize the estuary, but also to improve and honor the number of species. The yellow-ish area at the top is where the Army Corps in the, as a result of the flooding in the 50s, that was the first time I saw Pemberwick, but Dad took us over to see the houses floating, and we, we took some of the people home back over to Field Point for a while. That channel is, has been very effective in many ways. On the bottom part of the screen is an area that will be able to allow more tidal influence. At present, the small blue area just south of that yellow area is really crowded with rocks and petals, et cetera, and can be utilized. I had a local contractor who we all respect, say, wait a minute, that stuff can be used for foundations and concrete and so forth. Basically, it's the, a lot of the sand and gravel and some of the boulders. I think it was the 2011 storm, we had the combination of ice as well as heavy output bring some boulders the size of a year football and soccer balls. So being able to stabilize that bank and also rebuild some of the marshes and have public access, I think would be a really beneficial exhibit of modern technology, including engineering, that could really, really help us a lot. I understand that the problems that we're going through, for instance, with the shallowing of our major harbors in town, is a little bit different from what's happening in our rivers, but I really think this could be an example. I also have, at the beginning of my process, attracted the attention of a couple of friends who would be in a position to be able to finance all this and not use any public money to do this. The credibility that I would have on loan from you guys until I mess up or something else happens, would be, would be greatly appreciated. I, I appreciate all of you and your, your efforts, and I would like you to both wink and nod and say go for it and keep you updated on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you Peter for that presentation, and thank you for the tour back on Trails Day when we went through Pembroke Park, very hot day and ended up on the river there. And I've since gone back there to look at some other parts of that river. I totally support this, your request, but I would ask that, rather than vote on it right now, because I would ask that you, we circle back in the next few weeks and try and get together a formal committee that could, you know, have a chairman, a secretary, where the minutes can be posted and meetings noticed, and it could be totally self-sustaining, because as you heard before, we have a lot of things going on now, and I don't want to get distracted too much where we end up taking eye off the ball and the things they have right in front of us. So maybe we could circle back offline, get a, you know, good committee, solid committee together, together that could be self-sustaining, and then yes, to come back and report back to the board, you know, every, you know, month or whatever it's decided upon. But that would be my thought, is to, rather than vote right now, to get a little bit more structure to it.
Would you be able to consider voting now to encourage me to proceed without any real legal jumbo, just go for it?
Yeah, I would tell you right now to go for it. I don't think we need to vote for that. I mean, if you can get, rally the troops together, get some people together that could help you with this. And again, have, you know, a chairman, secretary, somebody could notice the meetings, and, and if you do that, then certainly Jill, Lauren, and I can even, you know, if there's no conflicts, we could even join the meetings whenever, whenever is possible. But I would, I don't think we need a vote to do that. I think you could start doing that now, and we could circle back before the next meeting and see where you are in that. Now, Lauren and Jill, have any thoughts on that?
My thought is, is that this is the first time it's kind of being publicized, and, you know, people are seeing your slide deck, Peter, for the first time. I think we also have some neighborhood associations, whether it's the Association of the Pembroke Glenville Neighborhood Association, and maybe you've talked to them already. I just worry about, did we give people who want to be involved in this effort enough of an opportunity to learn about it and how they can get involved?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, right. Peter, thank you for the presentation, and I agree with Lauren, and I, I'm not, I wasn't quite 100% sure what you were asking for. It sounds like you're asking for a special committee recognized by the town to work on some of these issues. I would ask that maybe you come and talk to the Sustainability Committee about this proposal as well, because I think some of the things that you're trying to work on would fall within the interest groups of the Sustainability Committee, and maybe that would be a way to host it. If, I'll just throw that out as an option. I'm not 100% sure what you're asking for, but I think that we'll definitely find synergies on, on water and on environment that, that maybe we can work together on as well.
Yeah, I would like their support eventually as we are able to provide the, both the statistics and the reality of what's going on. We, I don't know whether you've driven by Glenville lately, but there is a suction dredging operation going on there. And they're pumping into the polyester bags that are on shore. Unfortunately, they didn't put the screens downstream, so the river turned brown for a while, but this may be their first effort trying to do that, but it's just above the dam at the old felt mill. And I really was excited to see that that's, that's come to Greenwich, because you mentioned Mill Pond earlier and so forth, and we have a lot of possibilities all over, over town. So the Sustainability Committee, which is kind of exciting for those of us who were in graduate school in the 70s, is that people are starting to take conservation of energy seriously, and I think this, this fits in more to the sustainability of our natural resources, especially for our children. I, I really want everyone to feel safe when they're swimming in our rivers and streams, including the Byram River, so. I think that's a great idea to reach out to them.
Peter, to that end, so I live around the corner from that project at the mill, and I know that there are many in the community that are extremely confused as to what's going on. I might also ask you to connect to the Pembroke Glenville Association to describe, like, is this a good thing? It just seemed like you said it was, but it does not look, as we walk by it and drive by it, that it is a good thing.
Yeah, I can relate to that. Well, this would be almost the opposite of that, where we, the unusual or wonderful thing about Caroline Pond is that it is tidal. It's very, very different than the dam area. But the important thing, and I really think it's, we're all used to the fact that we're headed back to warmer temperatures most likely, and the temperature of the water is crucial for the health of the Byram River and Long Island Sound. The deeper the water, the cooler the water. You drive by a Greenwich Harbor at low tide, and you see the sun shining on the black silt, that heats up an hour before low tide, then at least for two or three hours, and raises the temperature of the sound, especially in the harbor areas. And you may remember the fish kills we, we had in the late 80s and early 90s, that, that can happen again unfortunately. The, the deeper the water, the better, and if we can get the anadromous fish coming back up, we'll, we'll have lots of other species, including the anadromous fish in the Byram River, but also we'll have a lot of happy feather trends too. So I think this.
Peter, thank you so much. You're absolutely correct about that. I remember seeing that, the fish kills, several of them were kayaking, and you're right about the depth and the, and the cooler temperatures in the water. So, so let's circle back. We do have a long agenda. We have to move on, but thank you so much, and I think Lauren's idea is a good one. Reach out to the Pembroke Glenville Association, get some input there, start asking around, and we'll circle back in the coming weeks and see where you are with this, but certainly supportive of what you're trying to do. But we'll, we'll definitely circle back offline.
Thank you.
Thank you Peter, much appreciated. Okay.
Oh, one question, I'm sorry. It's the, when I, my request was the Byram River Watershed Advisory Committee request. Are the special committees, are they all appointed by you, or do the other select persons join in? Or the special committees?
We, it could be either. I mean, I've done some of my own. We, we could certainly all do this, it could be the Board of Selectment Committee. We could circle back offline with that, but again, I, I think we need to have a little bit more structure before we vote on anything like that, and just to, just to clarify what the goals would be, the short version. This way, as one person told me, if you, if you can't put it on a napkin, it's too long. And I always have to remind myself of that when I'm explaining things, and it's, you have a lot of good ideas there, and I think it is very, very important what you're bringing before the board. And I know we're, we all support the concept, but I think we just need a little condensed clarity and structure to it, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, Peter, thank you again.
I'm encouraged.
Much appreciated. Okay, thank you, Peter. And moving on to the request for residential parking, a residential parking program on my old neighborhood, Mead Avenue in Byram, and my friend Liz Eckert is here with us today.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me? This is my first time doing this.
Yes, how are you?
Hi, everyone. Um, who goes? Me? It's my first time. Um, so basically I've had some issues on my own street and Mead Avenue. Because there's just zero compliance and what seems like very minimal enforcement of the existing parking regulations. So I was trying to come up with an idea of how can this be fixed? And I thought if we had residential parking stickers here, it might help the problem a bit. We have a lot of New York, um, cars that are parked on our street, which I've sent pictures into Barbara. I don't know if you guys have been furnished those pictures. We have cars that are parked directly up to the stop signs on Mead, right under the stop sign. So cars coming up cannot see oncoming traffic. We have cars parked in crosswalks. This one that you see second to the bottom, the white car there. I started this because I was walking in that crosswalk with my dog and I nearly got hit by a car a couple of weeks ago because they couldn't see me in the crosswalk. It's a really dangerous situation. A good portion of Mead Avenue is in the school zone. It makes it dangerous for our kids that are walking to school. And I also think if we did a parking permit program, maybe as part of the application process, then residents could be made aware of existing regulations such as not parking within five feet of someone's driveway cutout and not parking next to stop signs and crosswalks. So that's my request.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Um, having lived there many years ago on Church Street West, right around the corner from there. Uh, we were running into a problem like that. And so we, uh, petitioned the town and, uh, we did get, um, permits for Church Street West. And, uh, so I can tell you the town would come by parking enforcement periodically in check. And I, you know, I, I always parked in my driveway and then a couple of times I got used to, you know, started getting used to parking on the road. And I came out once and I had a ticket, so I had to pay it. So it, they, it does work. It does work, but people have to remember to go get a, a sticker. Uh, so it signifies that you're, you're actually living there and you won't get a ticket. So. But I, I, Liz, have you, I know you spoke to several neighbors. I did, somebody did reach out to me in Byram. They wanted a little bit more information and suggested that maybe you go before the, uh, Byram Neighborhood Association to drum up a little bit more support and hear some more concerns. Because like anything else, um, even the best ideas, you're always going to get some opposition and it's good to hear that. But I, you know, supportive of what you're trying to do because I still walk the area a lot and, and see what you're talking about. But, um, I would probably, um, reach out to the Byram Neighborhood Association just to get, uh, both their feedback and their support.
Yeah. Well, as, you know, as people in Byram had heard that I was talking about this, so many people got in touch with me because it's just not Mead Avenue. It's Henry Street and High Street. And, um, it's a problem in this densely populated area where we have just so many cars. But to have cars, you know, from New York that I have seen with my own eyes, park in front of my house with tons of people getting out of them and walking to Byram Shore, they don't even live in Greenwich and they're parking on the street. Not, you know, it's not just, um, getting off track here. There's also cars that come, which I have also seen with my own eyes that come and park on Mead Avenue. And then they get into another car and they drive away, also New York plates. So it, it's a pretty big issue over here and it's not just Mead, it's all of Byram. So maybe you're right, we'll bring it to the BNA, but from what I understand, they've brought it up in the past and nothing's been done. And the fact that, you know, there seems to be true lack of any enforcement. I mean, every single day, these cars are parked in crosswalks, the same cars. So if anybody was coming down here to issue tickets out, I think it might stop.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know when we walked Byram a few times, a few weeks ago, and we had Deputy Chief Marino with us. And we, a couple cars that were, uh, living on, uh, South Water Street for a long time was pointed out. And the police did go down there and I think they did issue some tickets. So, uh, but as Deputy Chief said, as long as people call the, 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 um, perceive violations in to the town, that's when they can go, they could step up patrols. But, uh, probably a lot of these things were not even known to, to, um, some of the enforcement professionals there. So you have brought it now front and center, which is great. And I'm wondering maybe if we can't get a comprehensive plan for Byram and not maybe just piecemeal it. Cause I know a couple of streets, including, as I said, Church Street West have it already. But maybe instead of just adding Mead, maybe see if there wants to be a more comprehensive plan for Byram as a whole. So I'd be happy to, uh, attend the, um, the next, uh, Byram Neighborhood Association meeting with you and offer support and give my thoughts there too. So I think we could definitely do something, but I think it's probably better to get a, a more comprehensive plan.
All right. Yeah. Thank you very much.
As, as a former Byram resident as well, I can tell you firsthand, we lived on the corner of Gold and Nickel. And my husband petitioned to get a no parking sign put up and then we did not have neighborhood support. And right after we did it, a neighbor went and got the no parking sign taken down. So I would also suggest that I'm sure, and I know it's a good idea, that we get more of that neighborhood input. Um, I do remember from a prior, um, Byram Neighborhood Association meeting that there was feedback to parking services and, um, enforcement that they felt that there wasn't enough, uh, enforcement going on. So my brain is wondering again if that same access Greenwich, the, you know, click, report, fix, whatever it is. You know, are we utilizing that to also, um, communicate to our residents where they can, um, you know, sort of log some of these issues and then see what the resolution is. You know, and I'm also thinking about, you know, guests of residents. Cause I don't know how the residency, um, parking works. But if you have, you know, a guest come to your home, how, how, how do they get to park type thing?
That was the only, um, negative feedback I got from anybody in the neighborhood regarding the, um, proposal. And from Greenwich Parking Services, it looks as though you can now, it's already in place, have guest parking permits that they could just put in the windshield of their car.
Great.
That is correct. You, you, you can get up to two per, two, uh, visitor parking permits per residential sticker. Um, and just, just to mention, uh, we do have staff that, um, are looking in, in the, um, Mead Avenue and the Byram area. So they are assigned to that, but it does help when the residents can come together. And if there is a, a repeat offender, we'll call it, to just give us the heads up and we'd be more than glad to do that. But our scope is, is many, many streets within Greenwich. And so we can't attend every street every day, but we do try to do that. We do have, you know, uh, patrol officers. So any help, any input that you can provide, any heads up, we'll be more than glad to address.
And where should that be directed?
Uh, you can do it on access Greenwich. You could also, um, email, um, email the department directly, parking services. It's on our website. Contact us and we're always checking our emails.
Okay, great.
Fred, it might be worth putting in a community connections, a little blurb about access Greenwich and what its intent is and why people should use it.
Good suggestion. That, thank you, Lauren. Uh, Liz, thank you so much. We will, uh, follow up. And this is a, a, a good idea. And I see Jill's raising her hand.
Yeah, it sounds to me, um, that one of the issues that you're talking about is a safety issue. Not necessarily requiring a residential permit, but maybe we need to take a look at the new, you know, whether there should be a no parking zones around some of the corners and crosswalks. So I would ask that parking services, uh, you know, come back and report on, on that. Whether they're, instead of having a residence only provision, whether we can address the concern, which was a safety concern about people parking in crosswalks and, and sightlines by extending a no parking zone. When we had discussed this early on in January about a different area, but, um, how to ensure visibility through crosswalks.
I'm glad to address that.
Thank you, Luanne. Yeah, and I think Jill, um, you bring up a good point about the, uh, the danger spots or the blind spots. But, um, I think we, that's why a comprehensive plan for Byram and any other part of town should be done only because some streets you do probably want residents only on it. Because I could tell you, having lived there, um, there were times where you, if you were a resident on a certain street, you had to park sometimes two or three blocks away or over the old Amerigos, which is now Char, uh, that parking lot. Because there was people who lived three streets over, parking in front of your house and doing so every day. So I, I think, and it, it's worked really well on Church Street West. So maybe I, you know, the residence only probably could work on, on several streets. But I think addressing the blind spots and they, you know, closer to the, the curbs, uh, should also absolutely be in the mix there. So thank you for the suggestion. Okay, uh, Luanne, thank you for that. We have one more, I think, coming up with you. And Liz, thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is the outdoor dining request for Odeleese and Elm Street Oyster House with Tom Hegney. Morning, Tom.
Moving them up to the, um, Good morning, Tom and John.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Tom.
Uh, we're very pleased to be able to, uh, bring, uh, this proposal to you. These are two longtime restaurants. Uh, Odeleese and, uh, and, uh, Elm Street Oyster House have been working together to utilize the sidewalk space that they do have and, uh, share the tables that they have out. But the sidewalk is not quite as wide as it could be, uh, to allow for proper social distancing. And, uh, what we're proposing here is to take the four parking spaces, two in front of Odeleese, two in front of, uh, Elm Street Oyster House, uh, and, uh, uh, use the types of barriers that have been very successful on Greenwich Avenue for the restaurants there in a similar fashion to provide for, uh, outdoor dining, uh, for these two restaurants, both for during the day and the evening. So we would like to be able to use any additional, uh, barriers that either the Public Works Department or the Police Department have. But, uh, if they've all been used up, uh, the restaurants are prepared to, uh, uh, purchase their own, uh, and put them out there so that the, uh, area would be safe and protected from any vehicular traffic. There would not be any impact on the travelway of West Elm Street. This would just be for the four parking spaces that are located there. Uh, and here's the, uh, survey that we have showing where the barriers would be located and, and the tables in those parking spaces. Because they're parallel spaces rather than the, the angle spaces that you have on the avenue. They're a little narrower, uh, but it does allow, uh, for, uh, placement of tables there. And the loading zone, uh, which is rather actively used by commercial vehicles during the day, that's closer to Greenwich Avenue, that would remain open, uh, so that the commercial vehicles would be able to use it.
Thank you, Tom. Um.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay. Okay, um, is there another, is there another slide?
Uh, it was just my letter, uh, when John's, uh, next item comes up for Mix, uh, we did provide the, uh, uh, the GIS map showing, uh, uh, West Elm Street and the, uh, the parking spaces that exist now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so the, the three restaurants there, Mix, Elm Street and, uh, Odeleese. It makes sense. They're right there and it's, um, I know Mix does have a, a, a parking lot, but it's also for other uses there too. So, um, you know, and this is right next to the, to the Town Hall Parking Lot. We are, uh, again endeavoring to, uh, raise money to get a trolley to move people off the avenue, the parking there and, and have the, provide transportation to the avenue and the surrounding areas. Uh, we also are looking into, um, uh, sprucing up the avenue, including the barriers. But, um, I don't know if we have any extra ones right now. We can, we can ask them. But, uh, certainly, you know, anything you could do on your own, because we are going to try and raise some money, uh, on our own privately to, uh, to do that and maybe free up some of those barriers and give them back to DBW or the police.
That, that would be great, Fred. Uh, one thing I did want to mention, we do have parking, uh, at, uh, 200 Greenwich Avenue, which is the entrance right behind where these restaurants are. Uh, there's usually quite a bit of public parking on Benedict Place. Uh, and I can attest from personal experience that it's less than a five minute walk to the Town Hall Garage. So that's very close as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's a perfect, uh, perfect spot for it.
I have a question. Why is this different than the node process on Greenwich Avenue that didn't necessarily come before us? How is this request, we have lawyers involved? So just education on my part.
I, I didn't know another way to bring this forward. Uh, the, the process for Greenwich Avenue has been different. As the parking authority, we thought you were the appropriate ones for us to, uh, appear in front of and, and present this to. Uh, I, I suspect there will be other places, uh, around town that may want to do this, such as on Wooa Street, for example. Uh, and I think it's something, uh, that benefits not just restaurants, but the community as a whole, uh, with provide this amenity because although you can have indoor dining, based on the governor's more recent executive order, that doesn't mean that people necessarily want to dine indoors. And so.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I don't disagree, Tom, but other restaurants didn't have to have lawyers come before us. It was handled through the planning and zoning process. So that, that's what I'm worried about, that other, uh, restaurant owners didn't have to engage legal things.
Well, yeah, I think it's because this is off the avenue rather than on the avenue.
And also I, there's another, um, factor in that road, um, wouldn't accommodate a node, Lauren. It's just, it's not wide enough. So this is just taking up a parking space, um, where the avenue is, is a little different story. But, um, you know, certainly it's, uh, your question is valid. But it, it's a little bit different from, from the avenue. But, um, I see Jill has a question or a comment?
Uh, just a comment. I, to, to that point, I think you're just asking for the authority to take away the parking space. The, uh, permission for the outdoor dining and the placement of tables, whether it be for this request or the next one. My understanding is that has to come from planning and zoning.
We, we would go through the process, uh, that we did for the outdoor dining tables that are on the sidewalk now, uh, through planning and zoning. Uh, I, I should add, I did speak with Jim Michael about, uh, moving forward with this particular process. And, uh, that's when I found out the public work seems to have used up all of their barriers. And, uh, uh, he suggested that we seek out, uh, purchasing our own.
Right. So I get, so knowing that this is just taking away parking spots, I saw on the, um, I don't recall that there is a handicap spot, disabled spot in front of Elm, West, um, Elm Street Oyster Bar, Odeleese, uh, and I saw that there is a spot in the back of Mix. I just was hoping that, um, Ms. Bellatoni could address both the temporary removal of the parking spots of the overall downtown plan and whether it should be temporary or permanent and also access for, uh, people with disabilities.
Yeah, our primary concern, uh, goes beyond just giving up, um, for a parking spots. I mean, our, our first mission is to make sure of the safety concerns are addressed as far as both, um, emergency services, pedestrians and having your, um, the people who are going to the restaurants sit in those areas. I mean, once that's been established that all of those boxes are checked, that would be fine with us, uh, but you have to also go. That would be fine with us, uh, but you have to also go through planning and zoning as everyone mentioned. Um, I mean, once everyone receives all the, um, approvals, most certainly then it. You know, it falls into our laps as far as, um, parking enforcement. So, um, I would, you know, divert to the other departments first. But we just have to make sure that all the right boxes are checked by everyone and, and their individual concerns. Every, every department has what they're in charge of and what they perceive is, uh, most important to them. So, I mean, that's what our concern is. Ours, ours isn't making revenue, ours is making sure that, um. People are, people are safe, emergency vehicles can, can proceed down and that you're not encroaching into the actual roadway. So, you know, safety on both sides. So once that's been established and addressed, we, you know, we'd more than likely, you know, um, approve. Of prove that it's not an issue with parking services. As far as going forward on a permanent issue. That's something of a larger scale we would have to discuss, um, because it, it is very impactful as far as deliveries on the avenue. Uh, residents on the avenue, we're getting many, many complaints about the residents on the avenue and the retailers as well. So I think that's a discussion for another time, if you're thinking about making any of this on a permanent, uh, basis going forward.
Yeah, I could tell you that, uh, certainly I favor that, um, at least on a, a seven or eight month basis each year. Um, it's proved very, very, well, it saved restaurants by, by doing this. But also it's, it's added a different feel to the town, Luanne. Uh, and having grown up here, I could tell you it hasn't ever felt like that before and it's very, very popular. So I certainly will push for this to be permanent and we will also. Where, like I said, we are working on other ways to replace and in fact, um, increase parking. With, with other ideas, uh, because we do know, we, when you take away, when you add something, you're taking away something. So you're right, you have to make sure that you, you look at all these other things. So we will absolutely work with you and planning and zoning and all the departments and the, and the residents, uh, of the town. To make sure that, uh, their lives are made as easy as possible when it comes to any changes that we would implement.
So Fred, Sergeant Pat Smith had a hand up.
Hi, uh, Sergeant Pat Smith, Greenwich Police Traffic.
Sorry.
No, that's quite all right. I, I just have one question for the, uh, restaurant, uh, either lawyers or whoever's representing them. What is your plan for either your Uber Eat pickups or people who are just doing takeout? Since there's no longer going to be any parkings along there.
Currently, uh, people pull into the, either the bank parking lot behind, uh, Bank of America. Or, uh, they pull into the driveway for, uh, two hundred, uh, uh, Greenwich Avenue. Uh, for those, uh, pickups, uh, when they're just, uh, picking up rather than, uh, coming into the restaurant itself. Uh, and that, that seems to be working well. Generally, those parking spaces are all occupied, so there, there isn't the opportunity. To, uh, to use those for pickup and drop off.
Okay.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, um, any other? Questions, uh, or comments for, uh, Tom? Okay, so this is actually a, a first read, correct?
You do have the option, I believe, of taking a vote today if you'd like.
I certainly support it and we're ready to, and am ready to, to vote yes on it, but. I want to see how my colleagues, uh, feel on it. Jill?
Uh, I support, uh, this in, in principle. Um, as you know, I support the sort of. Making, uh, our community safer for pedestrians and more, uh, walkable generally. I am curious whether you've gotten, um, the agreement of the bank and, um. Two hundred Greenwich Avenue to u- use those parking facilities, whether it be on a temporary basis as well. We haven't heard from any of the neighborhood, um, members, so I'm just wondering what the outreach has been. To the, uh, neighboring property owners as well, before we vote on it. If we, if we were to. I, I do think we probably, you probably want to put this into place sooner rather than later. Maybe you can also talk about what the process is for planning and zoning and, and to address the, uh, concerns raised by Ms. Bellatoni.
A couple of things. First, uh, two hundred Greenwich Avenue is, uh, you, you pay to park there. So, uh, uh, that's open to the public. Uh, the, uh, bank, uh, does, uh. Supervise their parking, uh, make sure that people are using it for the bank and not for other uses. Except in the evening, uh, uh, that it's utilized by, uh, the general neighborhood. Uh, and that, that has proved not to be, uh, an, an issue. Uh, i- in terms of any comments from the, the neighborhood, well, the. What, when, uh, Mix heard that we were going in for Odeleese and, uh, and the Elm Street Oyster House. Uh, they said, that's a great idea, we want to do that too. And, uh, I, I don't think it impacts that many of the people living at, uh, twenty-five, uh, West Elm or forty West Elm. Uh, they do have their own parking facilities and many of them. But clearly aren't driving, they're just walking over to the restaurants. So I, I, I think that overall, uh, this, this is, uh, a very favorable. Uh, 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 proposal, uh, for, uh, the neighborhood. Because you, you provide for actually adequate outdoor dining versus the, the rather, uh, congested sidewalk. Uh, that exists right now.
So Tom, I just want to follow up on that. Uh, you had indicated that the bank parking lot is used for. Uh, Uber Eat's your pickups, but then you just responded that they monitor their parking lot to ensure. That it's only bank customers. So has there been agreement that with the bank, uh, have you? Uh, worked out logistics with them?
No, it's, it's been done informally for a long time. We certainly could reach out and have that discussion with them, but, um. Uh, it, it has not been an issue, uh, mainly because, uh, most of the activity. Is in the evening when the bank is closed, uh, and during the day, uh, most of the people coming to these restaurants walk.
Yeah, I also know that that bank's not very busy in terms of, you know, physical traffic, especially in this day and age. Most of us do our banking online or remotely. For the amount of spaces that are, um, allocated, you know, to it. So that's probably why there's a little bit more leniency in the policing that they do themselves. For the folks that park there for such a short period of time. From a first read, second read perspective, I see this request are different than, um, item B on our agenda. It's not municipal improvement, we're not approving, um, a purchase of land. So we didn't do a second read on B, I don't know that we need to do a second read on, uh, E and F. In my, um, personal opinion, and I reserve the right to get smarter.
Yeah, I did, I know a couple people who live in the area, um, are okay with it. But I have, certainly haven't spoken to, to more than two about it, um, who aren't in the restaurant business, so. Um, I know time is of the essence, you don't want to lose two weeks here. But, um, I'm just trying to, you know, to, to be cautious here also in case we do something and then. Found out that, you know. Every T wasn't crossed and every I dotted, but I, I think it's, it's a good idea. Like I said, I'm willing to vote on it now, um, so, uh. You know, if, if Lauren's ready and, and Jill, I think you said you wanted a little more time?
No, I don't, I don't need more time, I just have some questions. I, I think it's a good idea. I think everything we're doing right now has been on a trial basis and we're learning as we go. And since we are nearing the end of summer, uh, we did talk about a road closure through, um. Uh, early December, I think, for Greenwich Avenue. I, I think we'll have the opportunity to revisit it if there are issues. I would encourage either the restaurants or through their attorneys to reach out to their neighbors and, and coordinate. Um, pickups, it is a busy intersection and, um, safety is. And also to work with the, uh, our, the police department and parking services, safety is paramount to. Uh, the people that are utilizing that space, so. I think that, that is a, a concern. But I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with the vote on it.
Okay, uh, thank you, and I agree with all the points made by both Lauren and Jill on this, um. But, uh, I am ready to go forward with it also, so, uh, is there a motion, uh, on this item? Item F, the outdoor dining request by Mix.
This one's E.
E, yeah, we can combine them, uh, since they're, they're right next to each other, we can do combined items E and F.
And are, are we robbing John his opportunity to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, go there, because it's going to be the same. Hi, hi, John.
Hi, John, Mr. Camillo, uh, members of the board, uh, this is very similar application, uh, uh, just, uh, uh, up the street. Uh, the two differences based on some of the questions that the selectmen have had, uh, that I would like to highlight is, uh, one. Uh, we did have, uh, uh, notices go out to the neighborhood, uh, last year when we expanded the outdoor dining at Mix. Uh, that we had a, a number of hearings with planning and zoning, so I, I do believe that the, uh, neighborhood was well notified. Uh, about the activities on site. Uh, two, unlike the, uh, properties in the CGBR zone and some of the avenue projects that you've, uh, reviewed and approved. Uh, we're outside of the central Greenwich Business Zone. And so we have to provide parking for our operations. And so you can see on the survey that we provided. Uh, we do have parking on site behind the building as well as, uh, a long lease, uh, spaces. Uh, that we have on Benedict Court. So, uh, in terms of some of the, uh, uh, pickup, drop off, uh. Uh, issues that were raised, uh, uh, I believe we can handle those on site. And that's the, the luxury of being just off avenue.
Thanks, that, that helps clarify why this was a little bit of a different process, I appreciate that, John.
Okay, yes, thank, and is the, um, if Mix is considered outside of that Greenwich, Central Greenwich Business Zone. Wouldn't Odeleese and, uh. And, um, Elm Street also be considered outside of it?
No, they are within the front and rear building lines in the CGBR zone, so they are different. They do not need to provide parking, uh, for the seating in the restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, well, thank you, John, uh, for, for that information and I apologize there. You have to keep these glasses on at all times. I, I'm, I think we should, uh, we can combine, uh, items E and F, uh, for a vote since they're basically the same. Doing the same thing.
Fred, I would ask, um, that Ben weigh in, you would need a motion, I believe, to combine the two items into one. First, and then take a vote on that before actually voting on the two proposals.
Why don't we just vote on them separately?
Yeah, we'll just do it separately rather than do that, but thank you, Bart. Okay, is there a motion on item E to accept the outdoor dining request of Odeleese and the Elm Street Oyster House?
So Lauren Raven motions to approve the outdoor dining request for Odeleese and Elm Street Oyster House.
Uh, this is a, a point of clarification, I don't believe. It's within our authority to approve an outdoor dining request. Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our question is the use of the street, right? Not, not approving a dining request, that is a planning and zoning function. Ben, are you still on the line?
So we're approving the removal of the parking spaces, basically.
Or the, the, by the use of the street where the parking spaces are located. For, um, for purposes of outdoor dining if it's approved by planning and zoning.
Okay, see.
I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing, Ben's on the line, but I'm not hearing any response from him. I'm, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the land use attorneys who are, uh. Is that they're correct, that, the understanding of what the, the jurisdictional issues are?
Yes, yes, you're, you're in charge of the parking and they're in charge of the outdoor dining and we need both. And so this is step one and step two would be going through the planning and zoning process. And we'll, we'll be speaking with the town planner about that.
Right, so, um, so I would just ask Lauren if she could amend her motion to motion to approve. The use of the streets on a temporary basis to correspond to the use of the Greenwich Avenue timetable. Um, and, um, to relocate the parking.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah, something like that.
Motion to remove parking spaces for outdoor dining on, for Odeleese and Elm Street Oyster House.
So I motion to remove parking spaces. To facilitate the use of outdoor dining at Odeleese and Elm Street Oyster House.
I second that motion, but I'm gonna, I'm asked to amend it to add the clause that we, we. Authorize the use of that portion of the street. Um, if approved by planning and zoning.
Why don't you, Jill, why don't you, uh?
Approve the, uh, all right, so I, I'll, do you mind?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, I will motion to authorize, to re- authorize the use of the street. Within the existing, uh, parking, um. Parking spots. On a temporary basis through, uh. Early December, whatever the date was that we had chosen before, if anyone recalls, I think. December twenty-first. And a corresponding removal of parking spaces to facilitate the, the use of that. Those spaces for outdoor dining.
I second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you and thank you for the clarification on that. And going to item F, is there a motion to?
Okay, I will motion to authorize the use of the street. Uh, where the existing parking spaces are located on West Elm in front of Mix. And, uh, on temporary basis through December twenty-first, twenty-twenty. And the removal of the existing parking spaces, uh, to facilitate outdoor dining. Services.
I second that motion, Lauren Raven.
Okay, all those in favor, favor of item F, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you, thanks for the clarification and the rewarding and that's just for. For that, that point of clarification and thank you, John and Tom, for bringing this forward, much appreciated.
Thanks, everyone, very much appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, again, towards the end now, everybody, uh, item G is the, uh, ordinance to. The amendment ordinance on speed limit in the outer harbor. And with that, we have Assistant Town Attorney, Amina Ahmed. Good morning, Amina.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectman, uh, members of the Board of Selectmen. I'll try to get through this quickly. Um, I just want to mention also that, uh, Mike Van Oost, Chairman of the Harbor Management Commission. Uh, is attending as well and, um, Bill Ingram, who's the, uh, Chairman of the Mooring Committee. Of the Harbor Management Commission is on the line, um, and I was wondering if we could, um. Uh, allow them to speak, uh, during this meeting.
Uh, Mike Van Oost has been moved to panelist and will, Billy Ingram, please identify yourself by raising your hand.
He might be on phone only, there's.
Yes, um, so the, the number for, the last four digits of, uh, Mike's number. Are zero, five, zero, nine, and, uh, Bill Ingram, uh, is seven, seven, eight, two.
Okay. All right.
So, um, th- this is a proposal to amend, uh, Town Code, uh, Section seven dash nine. Which deals with speed limits both in the inner and outer harbors. Uh, the specific amendment that the Harbor Management Commission is proposing. Uh, is to the second part of Section seven dash nine, uh, with regard to speed limits in the outer harbor. And, um, as you can see from the proposal, um, that the language that's being proposed to be added. essentially says that no person shall operate a vessel in excess of slow no wake, and this is in the area of Great Captain Island. I won't go into the specific details as to the the navigation aids within which the speed zone would be enforced. There are two maps that we provided to you, and the maps, and thank you, Craig, I think you're sharing those documents. So you see, the first map that Craig has up gives you a sort of a broad view of where the outer harbor is and where the inner harbor is, and you see a great Captain Island there in the southern part of the map. And then the next map gives you a closer view of exactly where the speed zone would be enforced. And it's essentially within that yellow triangular area to the north of Great Captain Island between North, Great Captain Island and Cormoran Reef. There have been some issues with regard to speeding in this area. This area also has some moorings. It's a very busy and popular area for boaters, especially given its proximity to Great Captain Island. And the Harbor Management Commission has been working with State DEP for quite some time now to make sure that the state was on board with our proposal. The State Boating Division has seen the two maps that are before you, and they've also seen the language that's being proposed. And while there is no formal approval yet, they are aware of this proposal, have reviewed it, and the process would be if the town does go ahead and amend the ordinance as is being proposed, then DEEP would have 60 days to then, you know, give us their blessing. And so that's the procedure, but the Harbor Management Commission has been working very hard with DEEP officials. In fact, the Marine Division of the Police Department has also been involved, and they brought DEEP officials as well as Harbor Management Commission officials to the area to survey and to figure out exactly where the speed zone would be established. I will have either Mike Van Oost or Bill Ingram speak to what their experience has been in this area and why they are recommending that the town amend this ordinance.
Hi, everyone, this is Bill. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Bill.
And Billy.
Mike, would you like me to just give a little background? Hello?
Bill, if you could go ahead and just talk about the need for this speed zone.
Oh, sure, Amina, thank you. We've been working on this for over three years. It was brought to, it was brought to one of our meetings that there were starting to be issues out of Captain's Island. People not complying the outer harbor speed limit and creating difficult situations out there. Just for a quick background, Captain's Island is an extremely popular place. We have moorings out there. We, basically, we've put a limitation on at this point, and we're establishing a waiting list. So it's, as far as we're concerned, it's full of moorings, but we also have boaters who like to drop anchor. It's a popular place to go, and of course, the ferry that brings out the people to the beach. So it's a unique place where, if you're not familiar, people from boats can jump off their boats and swim into the beach. It's been doing that for years and years, and right behind the mooring area is a fairway that goes from right out of Greenwich Harbor and maybe a shortcut instead of taking the regular channel right out through if you're heading towards New York. It has a green buoy that separates Cormoran Reef from it, so it's basically like a highway for boats going out. And for years and years, boaters were attentive to the fact that there were people in the water and that there's boats there, and don't rock them with their wakes or whatever, but as time goes by, just like the car goes by at 100 miles an hour on the turnpike, boating is doing the same thing. People are buying bigger boats, the bigger boats leave bigger wakes, and when there's people in the water and big waves come past these boats, there's always the chance that a boat might come down on top of a person or injure a person. There's absolutely no need for it. And we totally agree that, and so did the state, that a restriction for speed there for no wake is definitely in order. So that's basically where we're at now. If we went out with the state DEP people, there's one person in the state that actually oversees all the markings. He was there and agreed, and we finally received information for them to do that, so now the ball is in your court. That's about where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Billy. Mike, do you want to add anything to that? I don't know if Mike can get on or not.
I just got a text from Mike saying that he did want to add to it. I don't know if he's having some difficulty signing on.
One thing that might be a little confusing, well, although the outer harbor has a speed limit of no wake, there isn't a postings or signs for that, and I'm sure that the people that wrote that made sure of that because if it was a 5 mile an hour restriction in the outer harbor, it would take forever to get out of the harbor. So these would be the only buoys, basically, in the outer harbor that indicate the slow no wake.
Okay, thanks, Billy. Still waiting on Mike, because I'm gonna, maybe Mike just wants to call in on his phone?
That was the plan, and his phone number ends with 0509. He should be on.
Mike is on.
He is on. He's just not connected to audio yet. You can see him as the visual.
Mike, try star six on your phone. It should unmute you.
It looks like he's doing audio on the computer and.
All right, all right, I'm here now. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yes, so just to reiterate what Bill said, and since the Harbor Management Commission's inception, we've continually heard concerns from the boating community, and it's something that now that the plan is in place, to Bill's credit and with Jeff Stedman and Amina, they've been working on this for for three years of getting the language correct, and the steps in the process is DEP had to give us the initial okay, and then we need the ordinance, and then after we have the ordinance, we go back with DEP and finalize the acceptable location for the buoys.
If I may just add something as to the process, so I know the board has a first read and then a second read. Again, that's your decision, but once you vote on this amendment, the next step would be to bring it to the RTM. Since this is a boating regulation under the state statutes, the state statute requires the town to approve the ordinance, and so we would then be submitting the revision to the RTM for its approval, and then give it 60 days for DEEP to then, you know, approve it as well. But like I said, they are on board and have been part of the process with the Harbor Management Commission all along.
And if I could just add, Mike and Bill have done great work on this, and the Police Department definitely endorses the plan to make this area, which is a very active boating area, safer, so just wanted to chime in on the Police Department's review of the plan.
Thank you.
So Fred, I'm gonna ask that, thank you for the presentation. I know that Amina, what you said is correct, that the RTM has to approve this as well before it even goes to the state, that, and I think they have a first read, second read as well when it comes to ordinance changes. So I'm gonna ask that we forego the second read on this as the board is in order to get it on the agenda for the September RTM meeting, because there is no, my recollection, no November RTM meeting, if you want to get the process moving forward. We would want to get, we would want to get it on the, as early of an RTM agenda as possible. Is that correct?
We're hoping that the board would go that way, but again, it's your decision.
I support that, too. This is a safety issue that we should get ahead of quicker as opposed to later, and if it's been in process for three years, let's go.
Thank you, yeah, of course. I mean, the second reads are great for something, but obviously, this, we don't forego it here, obviously, for public safety. So, okay, is there, sorry, is there a motion to amend the Town Code of ordinances regarding the speed limit in the outer harbor?
Okay, let me just get it up here. So Lauren Raven motions to amend the Town Code of ordinance with respect to the speed limit in outer harbor.
And I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amina.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Billy.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Billy. Thanks, Amina. Thank you, selectmen. Bye-bye.
Thank you, guys. Okay, last item on the agenda before we go into executive session is the Old Stone Bridge speeding issue, and Carl Higbee has been waiting patiently on the meeting call for a while, so unmute Carl. Okay. Okay, Carl, can you, can you talk? Well, we're waiting for Carl. This is an issue that.
How about now?
Yes, there you are. Thank you, Carl. I was just introducing you, that you brought this forward for us to take a first look at today. I do believe this is on the list of private roads in town, but.
It's not a private road, it's actually a public road.
It's on the list of the private roads we have.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll be real brief. Thank you very much, selectmen.
I just want to finish. Even though it's on the private road list, it's a road that people uses all the time. So it's a very relevant discussion. So thank you, Carl, for bringing it forward. It's all yours.
All right, hey, thank you, selectmen, all of you for being here. So I'll be real brief because I'm sure everybody wants to get to lunch. The issue is, I live on Old Stone Bridge Road. They paved this thing wide enough to land a 747 on, and it's a straightaway for about a third of a mile, so people tend to gun it. My kids were almost smashed down by a Maserati doing about 50 two weekends ago. It's been a pretty long issue we've had on that area because it is the primary cut through from Exit 33 off the Merritt to downtown, from Cogniwog over to Cat Rock to Bible, that whole area. So what we're looking to do is, we're actually not seeking any government intervention. We're seeking lack thereof. I know Janet McMahon, this is the one issue her and I have actually been able to work together on ever, and is, we're looking to have you guys allow us to put three white picketed gates, six feet wide, you know, reasonable distance apart, that ambulances and emergency vehicles would have no problem, but just to put a statement down that says, hey, look, guys, slow down. The road is, can fit four cars wide, and it's a two-lane road with no yellow stripes, so people just kind of open up on it. We have a huge amount of traffic, considering how, you know, small a community it is there just because of the pass-through from the Merritt Parkway. So what we're looking to do is just have you guys say, okay, you can put the white picket fence out. You put speed bumps or speed signs up there. You put flashing cameras with the lights up there and things like that. You put slow signs, and people just don't pay attention to them, so that, you know, we don't really want speed bumps, I know, because it affects your emergency vehicles, but the white gates would actually be so far on the side of the road that you could drive down the middle of them no problem without swarming at all with an emergency vehicle. So we'd pay for it, we'd maintain it, we'd, you know, do all that stuff. If they get broken from a snowplow, well, it's not your guys' problem. We're happy to waive that liability, and that wouldn't be any cost to the town.
Thank you, Carl, and as you were speaking, I got a note here that the public road list that I have, it is on there, and apparently that road, that list needs to be updated because it's not a private road, but it is. So I want to first thank DPW for sending that over, but also if they could check that list again and see what roads are on there that shouldn't be on there, so we don't go through that again, but thank you for sending that over. And Carl, I appreciate that. Yes, I think we have some data on that, too. I don't know if the chief has it or Parking Services has it, but I know.
I sent, I sent to all three selectmen a copy of what Sergeant Smythe's Traffic Section had done research over recent times and then in the past about average speeds and that information. Police Department's not gonna make comment about the gates, but Public Works probably would be making a comment about that. But we did send you guys the, all the traffic studies that we've done on that road recently.
Okay, thank you, chief. I did not see that, but the.
Yeah, I haven't seen it either. Did you just send it, or?
Well, we could, we'll, I'll dig through the emails and see if we can find it, but.
Came in at 9:58 this morning.
Okay, that's why we didn't see it. Is DPW, is Jim Michael still on?
No, he is not.
We don't have anybody from DPW?
No, we do not, unfortunately.
Okay, well, I will, I'll reach out to him after this meeting, because I think it's a reasonable request, and it's a worthy discussion. It is a very wide road there. I've, having grown up not too far from there, I know people use that as a cut through all the time. Carl's right. So I think anything we can do there to mitigate that, send a message that, you know, speeding, in any way you could slow the speeding down, if in fact that's happening, is something that we absolutely should do in the name of public safety, but I will take a look at that email that the chief sent at 9:58 this morning, and we will.
Yes, 9:58, it was set up early.
Yeah, okay, so 9:58, and then we'll take a look at that, but also we'll get back to DPW, Carl, and have them here for the next time, but we'll circle back offline, too, so we don't, we actually get something done in the next two weeks regarding that, and maybe get, you know, get their take on it, and I'll include you on those emails today.
Fred, this is Jill. I have a question about that. Carl, you had indicated that there's no, there's no striping on the road, and is that, historically, has there been no striping? That's a question that I would have, especially if the road has been paved to make it wider. I mean, it's a perfect opportunity to allow for bicycle access and a larger shoulder. Curious about the lack of striping.
Well, so when I moved in, there was no striping, and then they paved it, I don't know, two or three years ago, and they didn't strip. I mean, look, the striping's not really a concern. It's the fact that, you know, they paved it so wide when they came in there. They actually paved over my sprinkler heads that were over two feet off the side of the road, so the road got three plus feet wider on each side. So, you know, like I said, we don't really care much for the striping. It's the fact that people just do 50 miles an hour. And to the chief's point, I did notice those speeds things out there the other day, and I appreciate that. However, they put them in an air, they put them at a stop sign and at, on a turn. So the straightaways were not monitored at all, so the data may be skewed based on it. The one straightaway we're most concerned about, it was at the very end of that next to the stop sign, and by the time it picked up my car, for instance, it would blink. I'd be doing 12 miles an hour. So that may skew the data slightly.
The reason I raise the striping is that it's often been told, DPW has often said that when you have a narrower lane, people tend to drive slower within the. that when you have a narrower lane, people tend to drive slower within the lane because there's less ability to speed and actually have a little bit of leeway. And as we're working on increasing bicycle access and bicycle safety as well, that is just something, before we decide to obstruct the shoulder with fences, we should look at other less restrictive means of meeting all of the concerns.
Okay, I mean, look, I'm open to anything we can do to try to get this thing going. My concern is that, you know, it's just a straightaway. And, you know, you have a straightaway on Stanwich Road where the speed limit's 35, and it's got lines and all that stuff, and it's actually fairly narrow. But I've seen people pass me going easily 50, 60 miles an hour. So, I don't think a line stripe, I think some people have mentioned in the past, they put a cop with a speed trap there. I mean, it's expensive to man a speed trap 24/7 on a small road like Old Stonebridge. I think that would be a ludicrous ask. I think basically, our solution here is just for you guys to say, yep, okay, you can do it as long as it fits the emergency vehicles criteria. You'd have no liability to the gates. We would maintain that. So, that's all we're asking.
Okay. Carl, thank you. I will circle back. I will email you in a little while with this, and we'll circle back with DPW and see what can be done there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Carl. Okay. On the list, the to-do list today. So, all right, that concludes the new business. And with no appointments or nominations, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Was there a telephone number for executive session sent out?
We're gonna have the same thing.
Usual.
Great question. I will email you right now. With everything going on, it slipped my mind. My apologies.
No problem. Thank you. It's probably the same one as before. But, all right, thank you, and we'll just.
It actually is, if you do remember.
It's the same one?
I don't remember.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Hold on.
All right, we just muted. Is there a motion to go out of, into executive session?
I motion that we exit our regular meeting at 12:16 to enter executive session.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Mr. First Selectman, before you, if I'm a little delayed, I'm not sure if the tax assessor received the sign and information. So, I may be delayed just trying to reach out to her to let her know.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Craig, we're coming back.
Okay.
There'll be just one item to vote on, and then it'll be a motion to adjourn after the vote.
Still raining where you guys are?
No, my windows are so filthy after the storm, and I had just had them washed, too.
It's more on the way, so probably hold off.
Yeah, yeah. I hear thunder.
Yeah, I hear it, too. Hopefully, it goes away for the feast.
So, it's the feast tonight, Friday and Saturday, or?
I think it's just tonight and Saturday, I think. Very scaled down.
I can go Saturday and get my pizza free.
And wine.
Yep.
I don't know. The vote, the permit says October 13th, 14th, and 15th.
Yeah, I thought they pushed it back.
Unless they amended it again. I know they've been back and forth.
Yeah, they were, they did amend it. I thought it was two days, but I'll double check later on.
And to just come back on?
Waiting.
Is that, or do you want to proceed without them?
Um, well, yeah, there's no questions on this end. We're just, I'm just gonna call for for a vote, and then we're gonna adjourn. So, I don't think there's.
Oh, here he is.
Back. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion to go back into the meeting? All right, so we just pick it up with the.
Well, I think we motioned to exit executive session. So, two of us voted yes, so we're back. I don't know if we have to stay. We're back in regular.
I don't think so.
No, you do not need another vote since you already voted to exit the executive session. You're now back in regular session.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the, I don't have the item number in front of me.
Okay.
Or you want to?
Sure. So, I motion to accept the settlement agreement pursuant to the information in the memo to the Board of Selectmen dated August 4, 2020, from Cohen and Wolf.
Okay, I will second that. All those in favor? Fred Camillo votes yes.
So, just for the record, Jill Oberlander is abstaining from this vote, and I recuse myself from the discussion on this matter, did not participate in the executive session. Yeah, Barbara, if you can reflect that in the minutes of this item as well?
Absolutely.
And Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, so it's 2-0 with one abstention. Thank you very much. Thank you, Vin. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Barbara. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn our regular meeting at 12:38.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thanks.
The next meeting will be Thursday, August 27th, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you.
You all later. Bye.